The meeting of the Auburn Industrial Development Authority will come to order. It is now 5:03 AM or PM. Roll call, please.
Yep. Sorry, let me pull it up. Okay, Mr. Dacey?
Here.
Mr. Andre? Ms. Weber-McLeod?
Here.
Mr. Beer?
Here.
Mr. Cuddy? Mr. Gaspard?
He's coming in now.
I think he's joining us now.
I think he just joined.
Yep. I'll circle back. Mr. Gravious? Mr. Levarnway?
Here.
Mr. Giantino?
Here.
And there he is.
Hello, it was quicker than I thought.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the... We have enough people that are on the list. The minutes for the, uh, for review and approval of the May 20th regular meeting. Is there a motion, please?
Ryan.
Second, please.
Second, Roger Beer.
Okay. Um, are there any, uh, any discuss... Is there any discussion about the minutes? Uh, when we get back into the, uh, our unfinished business, the, uh, discussion area there will be referring back to the minutes because there's a lot of, uh, pertinent information in the minutes for that, okay? Uh, is there any changes to the minutes? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose? Extentions? Okay. Um... Bills and communications. Do you have any?
We do not have any bills for this meeting.
Okay, nice. It says none, but I just wanted to double check. Uh, report of the treasurer, Roger?
Yes, sir. Um, about fourth page in, there's the, uh, profit and loss budget performance for May of 2020. Uh, the... You can see in the left-hand column, uh, there's, uh, uh, minimal, uh, detail, uh, in terms of expenses for May. Um... It appears as this, if, um, I'm probably a little trouble reader. It appears that we have advocacy income in May of $168,000. Is that possible?
That's from the TESSY project.
Wow. Okay, well, that's certainly, uh...
How's that for budget, Roger?
About that, yes. Uh, so I, I guess I try to... So we'll have to update some of the budget numbers, but, um, we had budgeted $30,000. You can see in the far right-hand column, we had budgeted $30,000 for revenue this year. And, uh, we've got $168,000 in so far, so that's, uh, that's pretty good news and, um, will give us some, uh, flexibility in terms of a lot of things going forward. So right now, you can see that, um, as far as the expenses go, we are, um, we have $14,000 in expenses and we expect to have $31,000 by the end of the year. So if I was to extrapolate this very quickly, we're looking at a profit of over $140,000 plus or minus this year. And I think I'd like to let the numbers settle in and we'll provide more detail, uh, next month. But right now, um, pretty good news and, um, um, uh, nice work to all involved, obviously Tracy and Samantha. Uh, and, um, that is the, um, main, uh, thrust of the, uh, of the, uh, report. Um, any other comments want to make? The $168 is the full amount for TESSY?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so we do... It's possible we'll have others, uh, coming in, um, earlier and so forth rest of the year?
Yeah, we could still have projects this year in addition to this.
Okay, well, I would say this. If you're ever going to have unbudgeted things, we... That TESSY number was unbudgeted. Uh, it's certainly nice to have it in the positive direction than have a bunch of surprise expenses. Do we have any other, uh, expenses related to TESSY that, uh, will be forthcoming in the next couple of months?
No.
Okay. Very good then. Um, if anybody has any further questions on the, on the financials, uh, please, uh, forward them.
We're going to, uh, discuss, uh, TESSY later on and how they're doing. Uh, Tracy?
Um... We could. I don't have much of that.
Well, if you have an update, then fine, we'll go get to that later. All right, um... Motion to accept the, uh, Jan Allen balance sheet?
Ryan, some more.
Second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I, I would, I would... The only further discussion we've got, um, for the next meeting, we'll update the, uh, year-to-date numbers. The May, uh, number of the $168,000 in the left-hand column will, in the next, uh, you know, in our next presentation, will carry over to the middle column so that, uh, January through the end of May, or actually next month, the end of uh, June, will include that number for the year-to-date, uh, amount. Does that make sense? Everybody understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure why I did that, so we'll make sure it's fixed for next month.
I, I've been mired in QuickBooks for the last couple of months and, uh, I now, uh, can, uh, assure you all that with QuickBooks, any old thing can happen.
True story.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose, extensions, carry. All right, moving on. The, um... Unfinished business. Pilot criteria discussion. Uh, as I said, it'd probably be a good idea to have your minutes available because it tells you what we discussed last time. Um, one of the areas that, uh, had come up and, um... Jimmy, uh, you brought this up about Ada and SITA and doing marketing?
Yes.
I said that we would discuss it further, uh, today. Um... Have you given any more thought to that, Jim?
Um... Not really. Uh, you know, Tracy made a point that SITA is, you know, in the process of coming up with a marketing plan. Um, and, and I guess I'm fine with, with waiting for that to come to fruition. I guess my main point was that as Ada, we have, um, a budget and, and our, um, mission is to promote industrial development, economic growth in the city of Auburn. And I'm fine with, you know, whatever marketing plan we have aligning with SITA's. Um, but I want to use our money to focus on businesses and issues in the city of Auburn. Um, not knocking Cougar County or SITA in any way, and I'm fine with them aligning. Um, but I, I really feel we have a story to tell. Um, I feel that, you know, and I, I just keep running into instances of people moving here, choosing to live here, young people coming back here. Um, and there's a reason why they're doing it. And I think if we tell that story, um, and we highlight the successful projects that Ada's been involved in, um, especially in this time, when I think that due to COVID, and again, I don't want to capitalize on a bad situation, that's not my intent, to minimize the negative effect that this has had, um, to the economy and to life in this country. Um, but I think, you know, we, we have, um, a lot of positives here. And I think that if we can, the sooner we tell that story and the sooner we get out there, the better for us.
I, I would like to, uh, you know, add to what Jim said and, and the timing is good and perhaps, uh, we are in a position to discuss it, uh, going forward as, as, um, as Jim suggested because of the fact that, uh, the, our, you know, financial position is, is been strengthened, um, in the last month or so, so that, uh, if we did have a plan, we can actually, um, execute it. Certainly not, uh, suggestion to be lavish about it, but it does... One of the nice things about having, um, the recent inflow of income is that it gives us a chance to, uh, to do, um, some creative things and actually execute them without being stymied by, you know, really stringent financial, uh, circumstances. I'd also like to add, um, and I, you know, I think that this is, um, I suppose, consistent with, or talking about marketing and what we're going to do and what we can do for somebody is that we, um, along with that, um, probably, um, you know, discuss, um, the things we do so that we understand when a project comes up, so, you know, with, with, um, with the TESSY situation, it, it, it came quickly. I, I'd like you, it seems to me like we, we reacted quickly, but, um, you know, along with the marketing, uh, also an understanding of, um, of, um, you know, when a, when a, when a deal comes up, how, for lack of a better way to describe it, how generous, vigorous we should be or how, how stringent we should be. And I, I say that, and I'm going to get... I'm trying to make my point, and I don't feel like I'm making it very well, but I, I think I may have made this to Tracy before. Um, when I was working in, um, and I'm going to use this as an example, if I might, is that when I was working in Syracuse, um, we, we had a situation, although I was not directly involved with it, I was advising somebody who was, uh, part of the development group in Syracuse. When Destiny came on board and, um, they were asking for some number of, of tax incentive, some incentive number which exceeded $100 million. And, um, there was some really, some tremendous tension, um, between the mayor and so forth, uh, in various groups is that, you know, whether we were, they were to provide that, um, that type of assistance to the, to the pyramid group. And the person I was advising was really, um, really frustrated about me. I remember him saying to me, he says, "You know what? If a deal like this was happening in, um, in Charlotte, North Carolina, where you had an industry coming in and, and, um, they are asking for this type of incentive, the, the discussion would last about 15 minutes and then we'd be on our way." The point being, I guess, is that, uh, some places are very aggressive in their incentive process and, um, some are less aggressive. And, you know, I, I would just like to feel comfortable in, in coming to, I guess I might say, a sweet spot of, you know, when the projects come to us, you know, what we should be offering and, and in some cases, you know, do we become less conservative or more conservative? And that's just a general point I had. I, I, you know, I've, um, felt, um, really challenged by the, by the project and, and wanted to... I guess I wanted to have enough, um, understanding to say, you know, I feel... I wanted to be more comfortable than I was with decision and that was on me. The reason I wasn't, the reason I wasn't as comfortable is I just didn't feel like I was, uh, grounded enough to, to, to make sure I made the, as, as good a decision as I could. And I, I suggest that hopefully that would be part of some overall discussion of, of marketing and, let's say, administration.
Um, thank you, Roger. I, uh, just to give you a little historical background on marketing in Cougar County. Um, when we did not have SITA, then we had the county IDA and the city IDA. Unfortunately, the county IDA can come into the city and take projects in the city, but the city, of course, can't go into the county. And that was a problem because there was a, uh, a very paternalistic attitude by the county IDA over all projects. And, um, we had a, we had a, we had a difficult time with that a few years ago. Uh, one of the things that SITA has done is smoothed that out. There's a, the definite understanding, the county does county, the city does city. Um, unfortunately, it didn't work out, but that really came to light when we were working on the, uh, milk, the, um, kosher milk, milk plant. Um, and, uh, I think that's when it really started to come together. Uh, as far as marketing, I, I feel that we can do more marketing. Um, uh, one of the, part of the marketing, um, structure should be to have a list of all of the businesses and how they interact with other businesses in the county and what they could do for a business coming in to the county, uh, in the city that, uh, to help us to do a better marketing job. And I think money needs to be put into that, to put that to bed because that's, that, that project was just really hasn't gotten to where I'd like to see it yet.
You know, I mentioned right at the start of the meeting, not everybody was on the line, but the Lieutenant Governor was in town today. And she made a couple of stops in downtown to visit businesses that have recently reopened, um, to talk to them about what that's been like, what the challenges are. And a couple of things come up, or came up. Um, first, we stopped at Prison City and it happened to be Mark and Dawn's 20th wedding anniversary. And Dawn told the story of how their first date was them brewing a beer at home. Now 20 years later, they have award-winning beers and they're building a 10,000, uh, barrel-a-year brewery in the city of Auburn. Then we went to Next Chapter. There's two people that worked their entire lives, they retired, they chose to move to Auburn to open a business here. They single-handedly transformed an eyesore in downtown Auburn. Um, and then the story was told about when we went to the Harriet Tubman statue, how the people who own Next Chapter, their brother-in-law and his family purchased that statue and donated it to the city of Auburn. So there was all these amazing stories that were told about Auburn. And Lieutenant Governor and her staff were blown away by that. Those are some, just some examples, there's many more, but I think if we can tell those stories and get those stories out there, that's marketing Auburn and the quality of life we have here in a close-knit community. So that's what I'm looking for. Um, I just wanted to, that happened today, so I just wanted to share that with everybody.
You know, I'm also having a thought, Tracy, because I'm not fully aware of other, um, marketing strategies you could be using in collaboration with the other economic development entities, but it seems to me, as I'm watching the growth of downtown Auburn, that there are some very specific types of entrepreneurs choosing to open up businesses. And so I think also, if you're, if you have a concern that launching a market of, marketing initiative might dilute something you're already engaged in, looking at a more targeted strategy could be interesting. So we're seeing that our community is a hotspot for craft beer, right? So if we're going to do something, maybe to do it in more of a, more of a niche way so that what you're doing gives lift to any existing marketing initiatives you have versus competes with them. And then I think there is something really powerful, because when I look at the demographic of these entrepreneurs, they're a generation or two behind me, right? Um, and that, and however, they're doing kinds of businesses that would make them eligible for the type of support that Ada needs, like the expansion of these breweries. And I think if you combine the storytelling with some very targeted marketing to some specific types of entrepreneurs, that would be another inroad for Ada in terms of attracting people to here or marketing services that we have to someone. A lot of younger people are choosing entrepreneurship as their way of, and they think of it as their way of life. I think of it as my way of life, right? And so I think that there could be a real targeted approach. Um, if we look at the data and we sort of discover who's really starting to launch businesses here that have expansion capacity and do some niche communication and marketing with them, I think that could be value-added to the work of Ada as well.
Anybody else?
So Jimmy, to your point about some of these stories, one project that we're working on right now, just internally, is trying to put together some investor profiles, um, which is really kind of talking to business owners about their experience doing business here. And the ones that we've reached out to thus far have mostly been in Auburn. And to tell those stories that you're talking about and tell about what their experience has been here, what their business is. Um, and we're, we're struggling a little bit with it right now because it's a weird time to ask people to do videos.
Sure.
But we're, that's one of the projects that we're working on internally right now, um, to speak to that point. And Jim, I, I just wanted to ask you about, you're talking about a list of businesses and how they serve other businesses as part of the marketing plan. I'm, I don't know that I'm fully following the concept there.
Well... Having, having a list of all of the businesses in the county. Um, because you need the county, you can't just do the city, even though we are the city, because there may be a, a company outside of Auburn that could feed a company that's in Auburn. Um...
So are you talking about like supply chain recruitment? Or are you talking about, are you talking about like supply chain recruitment? Like, you know, going out to the suppliers that have multiple customers or not necessarily to share as a tool with businesses, but to say, like, we know that there's this market, who services this market?
Well, I'm talking about a supply chain, uh, concept where, uh, and, you know, a good example is there's a company right across from the steel mill that came into town. What they do is they coat reinforcing rod because all state and federal projects, all reinforcing rod has to be epoxy coated. So they, they, they brought the company to Auburn because there's a steel mill here and there was a facility available to do that. And what we need to do is when we're out there looking and, and we see a company, we look and to see what we can do for that company with the existing companies that are in Auburn that it would make their job easier and there would be more, a better flow of, of, of the supply chain.
Yeah, so, I mean, responding in that way is already kind of part of our process. When we're responding to inquiries, we can talk about, you know, to the extent that we know of the businesses that exist, we can talk about those and that supply chain with those inquiries. Um, we've been less successful at really identifying proactive recruitment in this way. Um, but in terms of responding, this is something that we're doing. And it's something that we're still trying to wrap our head around a strategy in terms of proactive attraction. Um, because while it's something we've been talking about since SITA started, um, it's
I know.
Not as easily, it, it doesn't come together as easily as just saying, you know, do that, you know?
Well, I, I just feel that that, that particular issue should be a higher priority than it's been given as far as, as far as marketing goes.
Okay.
Did anybody else have anything? Uh, the, uh, labor policy, I, I think, Tracy, what we'll, we'll do is put it on hold until next week or next month because I really would like to have Billy involved in that, uh, when we, when we do that.
Did, did you actually want to talk about the pilot criteria at all? And said, and...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry.
We got onto marketing. But, so, just one thing I wanted to chat about really quickly is last month we talked about kind of starting to break down by industry and looking at what projects we do and what industries may be, um, looking for incentives and kind of setting a set of standards by industry. Um, I unfortunately did not get a list of industries out to you before right now, so I'm not expecting to like dial or to push this all out right now, but, um, just looking at our list of projects, it really falls into manufacturing, hospitality, healthcare, retail and mixed-use, construction. Um, and then there could be a place for like agribusiness, agriculture and some sort of other service. I wouldn't really know where to fit Meden, like someone like Meden into the mix. They're not technically a manufacturer, but they kind of feel like a manufacturer. You create a product and, um...
Would information, would information, uh, technology be good or information services? Because really it's a...
Yeah. It's not something we have a lot of necessarily. But it's an industry for sure. But it's, that's, I think, something to think about is that those are really the, the industries that we tend to see, um, particularly in terms of manufacturing, retail, mixed-use, hospitality. And the rest are kind of like onesies, twosies. But those are kind of the prime areas that we, we see in terms of past projects. Looking to the future, we've got things like maybe craft beverage is something we want to break out on its own.
I think we should be looking into telephone towers.
That's so funny.
It's a funny joke.
That's not funny at all.
Are you trying to make me cry, Jim?
No, no, no.
Anyway, um, so those, that's just something to mull over. Um, I can send this list out in an email. Um, and then we could have kind of a generic other category if we wanted to or wanted to try to balance that and, you know, kind of having an other category. We can always create categories as we need them. Um, and then I'm going to try to go back and find some of the best practices, um, documents on this because a few years ago, there was a big push to do this and to have industry standards. So, um, I'm going to try to find some of those documents. They're just kind of, um, buried because I think this was back in 2016 that they all came out. So, um, just digging them up is a little more challenging. I'll try to send those out to you as well to continue this conversation.
Any, uh, anybody else wish to discuss the pilot criteria?
And I just wanted to say, Roger, I wasn't fully, I heard you say that something about, I think I'm hearing this correctly, that something about the TESSY process didn't make you comfortable. And I think to the degree that you either want to talk to all of us or that you share that with Tracy as well, it might be something that would inform how we look at criteria. And so I would really encourage you to do that. And if anybody else, you know, felt some kind of way about any part of that, I just think it's important for us to think about it. And you already know that I'm supportive of at least establishing a baseline so that if we decide to diverge from that baseline, we at least have a set of, of... We've already had a conversation about under what circumstances would we do that? So that's just, oh, I was thinking about that. I don't want any of my colleagues to feel uncomfortable when we're making decisions. And I kind of believe no quickness over quality is a business practice that I have, but I understand sometimes we have to be agile. So I think that when we have a framework through which we're making these decisions and it becomes easier to make, be agile in ways that don't feel maybe disruptive to a set of core values that we have as an organization. So I just wanted to put that out there for consideration.
Very well said. I think that's what we wanted to think.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I guess I just, just to follow up, you, you know, it, I guess I was, I was thinking the more, the more opportunities we have to do the deals, the, the, you know, I would feel like personally, I would, I would get better at doing that. And, and, and having a sense of, uh, you know, what's a, what's a, what's a reasonable incentive and, 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 um, and what's not and, and having a good handle on, on what that, um, what that would be. And, uh, you know, agility is, is probably a, a pretty good word to, um, And, you know, agility is probably a pretty good word to keep in mind here. Because it's, you know, we're not, you know, we're here. I suppose as a general framework, we're here to make good deals. And one thing you would never want to be in a situation is to, is to chase a deal away. And so, you know, that would always be my starting point is that, you know, if we've got a chance to make a deal, we're, we're going to do it. But at the same time, not being, you know, totally too generous, for lack of a better way to describe it. So there's, you know, that, that and, you know, I agree, you know, a set of criterias will be helpful. But, you know, they'll only serve as a guide and it'll be up to us to, you know, be, I suppose, to use the Cuomo expression, to be smart enough to act appropriately to make the best deals possible and, you know, and not screw them up, so.
It's, in order, and one of the things, Roger, in order to do that, we have to ensure that people who are involved in economic development in both the city and the county are thoroughly aware of the fact that if somebody does approach them and are looking for something, that they don't make a commitment that it be channeled back to SITA so that SITA can then bring in the appropriate people to make those decisions. We've had some instances in the past where that has, that has been a problem. And it certainly affects the criteria when you have pilots that go from 10 years to 25 years. And the community gets upset and are not happy with the way we're doing our job. And so we have to, we have to ensure that when we do a pilot, that we're doing it in the best interest of everybody in the community. Not, not the, a small group.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm late. Is, is the project moving forward, the TESSY project? Have they been, has that, where, where are they with that?
We haven't talked about it yet.
We haven't.
Oh, okay. So, but there is something to talk about?
Not really. I don't have much, I really don't have much of an update, other than things are progressing as far as I know. I don't have much of an update beyond that.
You know, I'll say that when the TESSY project came to us, and I think part of it was because I think it was my first meeting on Ada, I was a little uncomfortable as well. Part of it being, hadn't really learned the ropes of Ada yet. And then, you know, the pace at which the project came to us. And then, you know, in that meeting, they asked for us to waive the recapture clause. So I had a certain level of discomfort with it as well. And I do think that having a baseline like Gwen has recommended would help in that. And ultimately, I think this worked out fine, right? We went back to them and said, well, hey, we're not overly comfortable as a group not having a recapture clause. What else can we talk about? You know, what's another option? And luckily, thankfully, they were, they were willing to talk about it and negotiate it and be a good partner. And that's what makes me feel ultimately good about what happened there is that they came back to the table and said, okay, we get where you're coming from as well, we're willing to work with you. And I, and I think Gwen, you've brought this up, and I don't know if it was in a meeting like this or it was in our meeting one-on-one with Tracy that, you know, can the type of company and the type of steward they are in the community, can that come into play? What do they offer to the community as a whole? You know, I ran into the comptroller for Nucor today during the lieutenant governor's visit. And I looked at, I said, I've met you somewhere before. And he said, Nucor, and I said, oh, yeah, you were at the Ada meeting. And that's a perfect example, right? They're going to come back to us and they're going to ask for an extension. But what they do for this community, in addition to providing well-paying jobs, can that come in, come into play? Should that come into play? And I think that maybe if it can, that should be part of the criteria.
Well, it's certainly, I don't see any reason why it shouldn't come into play. I mean, we have to look at all of, all of the variables when we're looking at a pilot, and that would be one of them. But we also have, there's a lot of other things that we have to look at that even though somebody's a good community, corporate partner, there may be other factors that would keep them from, from getting a pilot or getting the pilot that they want. You know, I mean, it's, it's all negotiable.
No, I guess what I'm thinking about, Jimmy, I was smiling when you said you don't want to take advantage of this thing that I call LaRona. But, you know, I've been really paying attention to the governor inviting us to reimagine things. So I was on a call with one of my clients and she referred to it as disruptive innovation. And we're going to take advantage of this disruption and innovate. And I think that, I feel that it's okay for us to play out a number of scenarios. Because I think ultimately for me, this is all connected to a larger question, which is what kind of community do we want to be? And that, and that we know that, that as goes an industry or, you know, an economic development initiative often goes to community. So I think in addition to the things that we're required to invite people to meet this criteria, if we're interested in having a specific type of community, then we would also want to make sure that at least companies that are either here and expanding or want to come here and do business, understand what kind of community we're trying to be. And so that we can be vetting their application through that lens as well. Because I don't believe that all money is good money. And I don't believe that all deals are good deals either. So I think it's okay for us to, to think about that and to imagine that for ourselves. I think Auburn's a beautiful community. But we're already seeing that all these other new industries are popping up. Younger entrepreneurs are coming into play. They don't think about business the way maybe somebody of my generation does. And I think as long as we're mindful about those things and really creating an environment to make the kind of deals we want to make, because we can see an overall value add to the community. I just think it better positions us to do that piece of business with them. And it also better positions us to articulate to the community when we might make a decision that varies from something they want us to know. I also think the economic development world is, has, in some cases, has a taste of it. Like Jim saying, being a small group of people making all of these decisions. And I think the more we clarify that when we're looking at these things, we are looking at what's in the best interest of the overall community, the better it is for reputation management and the brand of this organization. So that's what's on my mind.
Yeah, I think this is Jeff, I think having a set of legal/business criteria, parameters, what have you, that, that we kind of check the boxes off. And then also a community focus. And does it align to the values that we have as a community? And that way, we can kind of put those side by side as we evaluate and, and understand, you know, does, how many boxes on both sides, what columns do they check? So if we're responding to a community number, we're talking about how it's affecting the community. If we have to respond to a business leader or some other organization, we have, we have those criteria that we've kind of established and we can fall back on. And we kind of have a consistent story and messaging.
Well, and I think criteria is definitely important, we have to have it. But I have yet to see any package that we've, that we've worked on be right along the criteria and follow it completely. And everything just goes as smooth as can be, it doesn't work that way. So we have to be, we have to be flexible, but we also have to, we've got guidelines, we have to follow the guidelines also.
You know, when I ran into the gentleman from Nucor today, I asked him, you know, how COVID's affected them, how's business? And he said, we had a bad March and a scary April. He said, but things are starting to pick back up again. He said, but despite that, we've been able to keep our commitments to the community. That speaks volumes to me. Despite that, they were able to keep their commitments to the community. So that, to me, shows what type of organization they are, that they, they value it that highly that even though they had an economic downturn, whatever commitments they had made, they kept those commitments.
And to their employees, too.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. That's extremely important that, that they be a good community neighbor. And I've, I've said for years, that people keep on saying what we need. We, you know, we need these big companies and we need to have hundreds of employees. And that's the kind of business that if we're ever going to change Auburn and, and make Auburn viable again. But I, I would love to see, instead of a company of 500 employees, 10 companies with 50 employees. The big thing there is that if one of them fails, you've still got 450 people working. And there's a possibility that you can assimilate those 50 employees into some, into the existing ones. Or, you know, when you have 500 employees and you lose 500 employees all in one fell swoop, that's devastating to a community. So we have to think, think about that, too.
So Tracy, you said you're going to send us an email with, I guess, at least the categories that you thought. We, and then we would get back to you as far as the, like, the specific criteria for each kind of business?
Yeah, so I will send you the list of categories that, based on our existing line of business, makes sense. There may be others we want to add. And I will also send you, if I can locate them, the best practices document that has examples of this type of stuff. Just to give you a starting place to see like what, what is the state recommending in terms of criteria? What are other IDAs doing? Because there, there were models for this, so I feel like having a model would be a good place to start. So I will try to, I'm still trying to find that. And I will get that out to you with the list of categories. And then you can start to mull it over. I think Sam was going to try to set up a governance committee meeting. So we can try to review that, those thoughts for the governance committee ahead of the next meeting.
I have one other question. If, what, if we established a set of criteria, does it have, does the county have to have a set of criteria as well? Or how does that work?
They don't have to. I would probably share it with them and see if they wanted to explore a similar model. We do like to have things be pretty even between the two IDAs. So it doesn't necessarily, it, we want the business to pick the right site for them. And we don't necessarily want like one IDA having a much better policy to impact one way or the other. We want them to choose the right site. So, and to some extent, the IDA policies come into that. But we don't want the IDAs competing with each other in that way, sort of like cannibalistic. So we would probably show it to them and see what they felt about it and if they wanted to pursue something. But they do not have to have an identical policy.
I was just wondering about, I think that's just something to be mindful about as we establish this.
I think a good example is probably the labor policy. That we did work with the county, a lot of their ideas and put them together. Plus, we went to other counties to see what they were doing. And so that we have the most comprehensive that we could have. So, yeah, there's, in, in that sense, we do work together quite closely. Let's, let's just continue to think about what we've been talking about. And we'll bring this up again in our next meeting. I think that this roundtable thing is, again, bringing up some good ideas.
So if I work with Devin over the next couple of weeks on, because we've been working on this place-based marketing strategy, if we go out and get a few quotes, would you be comfortable with us bringing some quotes to you next month? We might have to go out to bid anyway, but to get a sense of what something might cost on an Auburn-focused portion of that project and, and bring that to you next month? Would that be okay?
I would be willing to look at it.
I'm fine with that.
It sounds good.
Well, we'll try to accomplish that. Put the fire under us when there's funding involved.
Yes, and lots of it.
But something, it's worth, it's worth taking a look at, you know, to see if that's the way we should go, so. While we're on, before we go any further, I did, I thought about it again. Tracy, there's a IDA seminar, I forget what they call it. That you were supposed to take it every three years. And there's one coming up this, this summer. Are you familiar with that? I got an email.
I saw, and so there's kind of two separate things. I did see NY, NYSEDC, the New York State Economic Development Council, sent out an email, I think today, about IDA academies, which is
That's it.
I don't really know what it is, to be honest with you. I've never seen one.
I've never, either. But it says we're supposed, it does say we're supposed to do it every three years.
I'll have to look at it. I don't know if they're referring specifically to the ABO compliance training, which is different. We have a couple of people that need to do that, but they have not been doing them recently. So
But then, if we could look into that.
I'll take a look at it, I just saw it today. So I'll take a look at it because it's not something that is familiar to me.
Okay, thank you.
I think they may have like incorporated that into their conferences. Like you'll, you might remember they used to do that IDA session before the conferences. So maybe that's, this is a new version of that, I don't, I don't know.
The thing that, the thing that caught my eye was that it's a requirement that they complete it every three years. I don't remember anything other than the initial training that we have to complete. So if you would, if you would, I'd appreciate that.
I'll look at it.
I'm sure you have some staff update?
Yeah, we've got all sorts of staff updates. I'll let Sam start and get the bad news out of the way.
Thanks. So I wanted to let you all know that I will be taking a new opportunity that will, I'm, my last day at SITA is next Friday, the 26th. And it has been an absolute pleasure to work with all of you guys. And I will miss everyone, but just wanted to let you know that I will be moving on. And it was not a decision that I came to lightly, it was a very hard decision.
Well, good luck to you.
Yes.
All the best.
You're all supposed to say, no, you can't go, it's not allowed, we do not accept your resignation.
Yeah, like she's going to listen. Okay.
Otherwise, we did this month, over the last few weeks, Sam and Derek and Danielle processed 70-something applications to the Auburn CDBG grant program for COVID relief or COVID support. And there were a lot of businesses, a lot of the feedback that we got or that Danny and Derek got was, oh, why are you calling me? I don't usually get this opportunity. Like, how did you even know I exist? So that was good feedback to get, to know that we're reaching people that don't normally find that they have access to these types of programs. And we had a few of our partners reaching out and making sure that we were reaching different types of businesses. I know Danny and Derek said they thought about the West End and they just called every business down the road. And so we really did try to get out there and reach a lot of different types of businesses in Auburn. Obviously, there are businesses we probably didn't. But we did make a very concerted effort to spread the word about the program and make sure people were aware of it. effort to spread the word about the program and make sure people were aware of it. We did get about 70 applications, that review is in process. I suspect we'll get the final determinations in the next couple of weeks, and funding will hopefully go out in July, maybe. No commitments. Don't commit it until the checks are written. So that was quite the process to bring in all those applications and process them, and that's been happening over the last two to three weeks. And, but it's been, it's been good to get out there and talking to different businesses in the community and just seeing where people are at. There's a lot of need out there right now, so we are trying to, we are working on trying to get another $100,000 into that pot of funding to help more businesses and to kind of increase the level of support that can be provided through that program. It is closed now, there's no applications being taken, but the response was overwhelming. So, but that's, that's all coming to a close now, and we'll be able to get those resources out into the community. The Micro One program is still available, we definitely haven't been getting the same level of applications, but it is still available. We are keeping it available for businesses that might need support in reopening. So if you know any businesses outside of the city that, or someone that, you know, didn't apply to the grant program for whatever reason, that is also still available as a resource to help with reopening and restocking, PPE, marketing, whatever the case may be. And that's up to $5,000. We've also been fielding regular economic development inquiries, which is nice, there are businesses still calling about what are their steps, looking to expand. We recently had a small manufacturer reach out, looking to do an expansion, so we're following up on that. So you may see some other things coming down the road that are more traditional-type projects. So we'll keep you in the loop on those.
Tracy?
In the office, yes, Jimmy.
Thank you to you and your staff for assisting with that. There are a lot of people in this community, business owners, that are scared right now, and rightfully so. The future is very uncertain for a lot of people. We were very fortunate to get this funding through the federal government. We're very fortunate to have a staff at City Hall that is very familiar with the CDBG process and has a great relationship with HUD in Buffalo. You know, we often get recognized as a city for the work that we do with CDBG. It's probably one of the most successful government programs that exists. So it was, you know, a perfect fit, the federal government saw that as an avenue to get funding to people who really needed it. So thank you for your assistance with that. You know, this is a perfect example of collaboration, all segments of the community working together, whether it's government, private business, CETA. So I'm very appreciative, because I know people are scared and they need the help. And it's just another example, I think, of why it makes sense to do business in Auburn and Cuba County. So again, thank you.
Yeah, Jenny and her team have been great, and, you know, it's been, it's been a lot of conversations over the last few weeks. I talk to Jenny like every day now.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you this, you know, nobody really will ever appreciate what city staff does for the city of Auburn. But I'll tell you this, Friday, you know, as these businesses were able to start reopening at limited capacity, one of the big things, at least for the downtown restaurants and bars, was whether or not we were going to be able to expand outdoor seating to make it viable for them to even open. And I went for a run at 11 o'clock in the morning, and the city manager was walking downtown with a tape measure and masking tape, assisting businesses with a plan that they could submit to the SLA. That is an example of public service at its finest. And that's never going to get told, nobody's ever going to remember it, but I will. And it's just, that's the relationship as a city councilor that I want city government to have with business owners in the city of Auburn, that we're in this together, it's a public-private partnership. So, yeah, the city staff has been unbelievable throughout this whole thing.
New business. Does any of the board members have updates that they would like to bring up, other than what Jim has talked about? Upcoming events?
We have our virtual awards luncheon on Friday. You can still register for that if you'd like to watch. Kathy Tripocano, the Phyllis Goldman winner, will be giving a keynote and will be presenting the awards. And it'll just be, we're trying to make it special, it is what it is right now. Anyone who registered by last Friday was able to order lunch to be delivered from Pier Market, so we did try to make it a luncheon, and just do something a little bit different to make it special. But that's on Friday, if you'd like to join us, you can register from the website. And then we have scheduled, normally we do a state of the city and county luncheon. This year, we are going to do it as two separate webinars. We're going to do the state of the city on July 21st at 9:00 a.m., and then the state of the county on July 23rd at 1:00 p.m. We may get creative and add a couple other things in there, but you can also, registration for that is going to open later this week as well. We are hoping to have a clam bake, so keep an eye out on that. And we do have the golf tournament scheduled for September 11th right now, so we're just keeping an eye on things, we're making plans with backup plans, and hope that some of these events may actually be able to happen.
I just wanted to say, thank you so much for keeping the Phyllis Goldman Award alive. Melina Condeselli and I created that award in honor of Phyllis Goldman, who was our mentor and was very leading edge in terms of inspiring women to own and run businesses in Cuba County. And it's so funny, somehow, her family members still hear that this is going on, and about every other year, they connect with me to tell me just how thankful they are that we are continuing to honor women entrepreneurs in our minds. And I know we kept that award inside of our company for a while, and back then, we really had to negotiate and educate the chamber about why we believed it was important, that a business award that they held. So Melina and I are both planning to be on the webinar, but it's just so exciting for us to be Phyllis's legacy in action and to watch new generations of women entrepreneurs in Cuba County also receive this award in her honor. Her family's very thankful. Her former business partner, Helen Hall, actually contacted me, I think about a year or two ago. And I just want to say, on behalf of Melina and I, that when we literally were on a plane and had this realization that we'd both been mentored into entrepreneurship by Phyllis Goldman. And at that time, there weren't a lot of awards recognizing women business owners in Cuba County, so we were really excited to do it. We were even more excited when the chamber agreed to take it on, and we're just thankful that people recognize the importance of keeping it alive. And we're so excited that Kathy is going to be making the keynote address, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you for continuing to support that legacy. And, you know, we had, a lot of the previous winners actually became sponsors of the award this year, and we're really happy to see that it's the 20th anniversary of the chamber having it, so we're really happy to, I mean, it seems like second nature, I don't know why we wouldn't do it.
It's hard to say no to Melina and Gwen, though.
Our next meeting will be Wednesday, July 15th at 5:00 p.m. It says Tuesday Street, I don't know where that, are we confident in that?
No, we are not confident on that, but we're hoping. We are, so right now, this is something we should cover, right now, our conference room currently has a capacity of eight people, so it might have to be a hybrid of, if people are comfortable calling or videoing in, and then other folks that are more comfortable in person, we might have to go a little hybrid the first couple of months, but we're keeping an eye on it. But when we spread those tables out to allow the six feet, it just doesn't hold very many people. So...
Motion to adjourn, please. Second, please. All those in favor? Proposed abstention, Carrie. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you, take care, everyone.